I'd like to welcome you to the January twenty second, two thousand thirteen. Village of New Paltz Planning Board Meeting. It is now seven oh three PM. I'm calling the meeting to order. My name is Maurice Whitehead. I'm the chair. Our other members are Michael Zerler, Rich Stefan, Tom Rocco, Liz Harsha. Our secretary is Kelly Stengel. Planner, director of a lot of things, Kurt Laval. We have the following items on the agenda. One is item number PB twelve zero one zero. It's a proposed New Paltz Cafe, and I'm not even sure if that's the name of it. We'll find out. It's specially used permits, site plan review. It's a change of use. It used to be retail. It's gonna be a cafe. And that is at Seventeen Church Street. And we have a few other items. One is we're gonna talk about amending the zoning law to authorize the planning board to use discretion in setting off street, on-street parking, off-site parking.
I'm sorry.
Says off-street. Off-street parking is correct.
Right, on-site, off-street.
Yes, in conjunction with site plan review. And Director Laval is gonna be presenting something about the Shuangunkh, and if if the author were here, he would be calling it Shangum, and I can't do that, so. Shuangunkh Mountain Region Guide for Planning Boards will present that. We have some minutes to approve from the December eighteenth meeting, and we have two other items which I'm adding to the agenda. One is a discussion of a gate that is, has been erected on George Danskyn Way. I'm not sure if it's called Danskyn Way or Land Drive there, but it's part of the secondary access road from Woodland Pond. Talk about that, and we have some budget discussion. And I think that will do it. So, first item on the agenda is the cafe at Seventeen Church Street. Is Mr. Gordon here?
I am here.
Come on up. Pull up a chair from, from the chair bank over here.
Thank you so much.
You can wear your hat. I didn't mean to sit a president.
If it was a Yankees hat, you probably wouldn't have to.
You know.
I wasn't sure how many last.
I'm very.
He's great with red socks.
I just wanted to know I was a Yankee junior growing up.
I was a Brooklyn Dodger. You notice whose chair is higher? That's right. My daughter's a Yankee fan, and this is why I wear red socks. Okay. I'm a San Francisco Giants fan and a Mets fan. Now that we've got the disclosure set. Mr. Gordon, we have from you an application to convert some existing retail space into a cafe. Why don't you pull up a chair so you can lean on the table here? First of all, just for my edification, what is the name of, do you have a name for the cafe?
You know, we're considering several names.
Okay.
We have not finalized.
Okay. So it's a yet-to-be-named cafe?
The Eatery.
Okay. I'm sure that's not been used before, so. Good. So why don't you, might you tell us what you're gonna do?
Okay. The existing space was a retail space. It had several different life experiences. It was an antique store, it was a women's boutique, fashion boutique, it was an art shop. It has two commercial spaces, a larger space and a smaller space. I'm planning on converting the smaller space into the cafe.
Which is the space to the south?
It's the space to the left of it as you face it.
Okay.
Which would be.
South?
South, yes. Prior to submitting my plans to you folks, the planning board, I met with the representative of the Health Department, Cora Kessler, and the Town Inspector. So with their input, this is what I have submitted to you, obviously I'm gonna follow all the codes and regulations as required. Next to the building, there is a small patio which I'm planning on utilizing as well. So the whole project is small enough, which I think New Paltz encourages, kind of the mama and papa's, in this case, just papa. And I hope it's gonna meet with your approval.
Okay. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to evaluate whether the application is complete so that we can schedule a public hearing. And before that, actually, it has to go to the county for, for their approval since this is an increase in parking requirements.
Yeah.
And it's within five hundred feet of a state road or county road, I guess it's the state road, don't I know?
Yes.
Yeah.
And if I just make a comment, I'm not quite sure that the increases in parking requirements.
Well, it does according to our code because the, because the retail space with the same square footage would use less parking, would require less parking than, than the cafe with as many tables as you have. So that's, do you have the exact numbers or?
I believe it's seven spaces that are required, and the, well, I think that the total count, I think, was six two-person tables on the patio and
nine inside.
Nine inside, is that, is that correct?
I think that's.
Right.
Yes, so it's twenty-one, so.
One, one third.
Yeah, one and three.
Right, seven spaces.
So the cover memo from the building inspector is incorrect. I checked with her today. She had, she had five, but she had miscounted the number of spaces inside.
Okay, so in any event, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to make sure that everything is in order so that, because the county won't review an application unless we have said it's complete and whether in fact it is complete. So, and once we determine that, we will submit the application to the County Planning Board. And we can schedule a public hearing on the condition that we receive a recommendation from the County Planning Board in time for that public hearing, which we should do. However, I will say that two months ago, I think it was, there was an application, or two applications, that were sent to the County Planning Board, and they canceled the meeting because of a storm. And that meant that we had to delay the other, but anyhow, that's the, the general procedure is that we will schedule the public hearing in anticipation of the receipt of the recommendation from the County Planning Board. And if it doesn't come in time, then we'll have to reschedule the public hearing to the next meeting after that. We generally meet every two weeks. Sometimes it's every three depending on the calendar. Okay, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand that if we accept an application as complete, doesn't mean that's approved.
Understood.
Okay. Because what's not in this application is a parking plan.
Parking plan?
Right. But that doesn't make it an incomplete application.
Right, well, there are things that will come up during the public hearing that are not part of this.
That's right. But the fact that we sent it to county, I was just saying, that doesn't make it a completed plan.
It's not finished, but it's, it is complete for our purposes, this evidence. We have all the pieces that are required for their.
For discussion, yeah.
Mr. Zerler, you have any questions or comments?
So this building, Jack, has been locally historically designated.
It has been, and I was the one who renovated it.
Right, so I think that may require that this application go in front of them as well.
I am not altering anything. The exterior remains the same. Everything else that is in place is in place. Even the inside is not being altered.
What about the sign on the outside?
Well, there were signs, you know, of different names, of different businesses were there.
Okay.
That doesn't change either.
Okay, so there'll be a new sign to identify this new business?
Yes. I mean of the same size.
Right. So do we know if?
A certificate of appropriateness is necessary?
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I'd have to double check for us because the, the regulations are, are pretty specific. Um, I don't know if the sign itself triggers it. There is no facade changes to.
No, right, so.
But I would, I would like to double check for the board to see if the certificate of appropriateness from the HBC is necessary because, um, we haven't seen too many of those applications and stuff.
Right, I've, I've not seen one since I've been here. So is that something that would impact the county review?
Probably no more so than, than the parking, the parking item.
Yeah, I've never known any HBC stuff to have to go to county, so.
Okay. Right, but they might say that it's required that HBC review this if it's, if it's a, if it's been a designated building. I don't know that. They could put that in their comments, which.
I would say the safest, the safest route is to give them an application that is as complete as it can be.
It actually.
Rich mentioned the, the parking and, and now this. I mean, that would be, I think that would be the.
And the problem, the problem being that they only meet once a month.
Right.
So if we don't, we have an incomplete application that we sent to them or something, then we, then that puts us off another month and then another two weeks after that. So it is best for all of us if, if we can get this as good as possible so that they won't have anything to complain about. So. Okay, so you can contact them, Kurt, to find out whether.
Check the code and contact the, the chairperson of the HBC, yeah.
Okay.
No, not yet. Agnes Deau-Roe is acting chair.
So what needs to be changed, if anything, on the actual application in regard to the park?
Well, I don't know that, Kurt. What do you?
I, right now, of course, there, there is a municipal parking area. It's quite limited, as we know. It's, it's between Chestnut and Church. So there is that area. It's within approximately two hundred and seventy feet of the property in question. It, it's difficult to say that there is additional capacity there.
Right.
And I don't know of any other municipal lots. I don't know if, if parking in the Huguenot District is, is that close. I don't think it's within four hundred feet, so. Until we alter our regulations, um, it's still a. I can just.
But, but, excuse me one second, but in terms of the application itself, do we need to have that level of detail for this stage of the approval, for our determination of completeness?
For the determination of completeness as opposed to county referral?
No, as opposed to public hearing.
Okay. Well, it's, it's not complete until, under the code, it's not complete until the parking is addressed.
Okay.
So. And of course, it was only today when, when Michael spoke with the building inspector. And of course, we, we realized that there are additional spaces necessary than, than was originally calculated.
Right. I don't know that it makes that much, that, that the new, was this two more spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't mean that.
I don't, I don't think that's so much more. I mean, that, I think we all know that street, and we all know that parking is not necessarily always available, but it's pretty tight there, and that municipal law at some hours of the days and nights is very busy also.
Yeah.
And I don't know, yes, sir.
Can we just, like, X out, change it, an initial in the margin?
Say it again? Oh, you mean if the number of spaces required?
Just fix it.
No, that's not the problem. I, I don't think that's the problem. Is it? Is that what you're, I, I.
No, just that I don't, there's really, there's no off, I'm sorry, there's no off-street parking that I'm aware of, so, well.
Right.
Associated with this property.
Right. So according to our code, there probably isn't enough off-street parking to accommodate the increase in, in use.
That's correct, yes, even though I don't think that will, that will stop this business from, from succeeding, that is the current code and
Right.
It's something we'll talk about in the other discussion.
Right. So, but my question is, assuming that we, we change the application to say nine spaces instead of, or. Yeah, then, but that's not what, what somebody, what Rich mentioned was a parking study, I think, or a parking something. What, what was it, the use?
Well, no, my, my point is that the application is complete. However, the parking issue still has to be addressed. Doesn't make it an incomplete application.
Understood.
We've got, we've got a completed application from what I look at.
Right, but so, but what's, what's the holdup? What do you think is the problem with sending it to the county as it is?
There is, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, I'm sorry, it took a, we went a long way to get here, but I don't, as long as they don't turn it away as pointing out that we haven't, you know, that we don't show compliance with our own code regarding, regarding parking. I don't know that that would happen. I mean, it's a possibility, but.
Yeah, but we won't show compliance until this application has gone through a public hearing and everything else, is my point. Complete doesn't mean it's right. It just means he's addressed the point. I think he's addressed it wrong, but it's been addressed. So we can send it on to the county, and they can come back and let us take it through its course.
I'm certainly okay with that. I think at the time of public hearing, I think the public.
Well, then we'll have to, we'll have to do secret dealing and so on, so, yes. Okay. Mr. Rocco, do you have something else to add?
I just wanted to be clear. There are twenty-one spaces or seats in the restaurant?
Yep.
For in the cafe?
That's where I can.
According to the plan, yes.
I guess.
Okay. And is this going to be a full-service bar?
No, it's gonna be similar to, for example, a Mexicali Blue or what just opened a few months ago, North Front Street, HR Dicky, something very similar. We all share the same public spaces. None of us can create parking spaces.
Okay.
Five years ago, I built a full restaurant, which seated seventy, and we went through the same issues. At that time, I conducted at my own expense a full parking study, not to mention what New Paltz conducted, a transportation study. Now, that was a few years ago, and at that time, we were told that there were ample parking spots in the village of New Paltz. That was before there were, you know, alternating side streets proposed and so on, which would definitely affect and impact small businesses such as what I'm proposing. So at that time, I was told that I did not need to have any parking spaces, even though I proposed several. But that was about five years ago or so. So now I am back here, you know, we're talking about, obviously, a similar issue. It's, it's the same issue, and I don't have any other answer, you know, except that I'm hoping that there are enough parking spots for a little space like this. If there's a no, then probably that's gonna be the equi, the equivalent of a moratorium in New Paltz on future businesses. I'll just be.
Well, it's not a matter of business, it's a matter of the type of business.
Well, let's say this type.
Because we're talking, that's right, that's right. We're talking about the restaurant having, in this instance, having, requiring seven times as many spaces as the retail space did.
I understand that. That's the goal.
So that's the issue, yeah.
Understand. All, all I can say is that having several retail spaces on premises, I can tell you that somebody trying shoes or a new dress or a pair of jeans will not take any less time sometimes than sitting at a small place like this. But code is a code.
Well, if you have, but if you have twenty-one seats, then the capacity is for twenty-one people, and the code now says three seats for each parking space, so.
But that's the.
That's what we have to work with, yeah. And if, if there were sufficient nearby off-street parking, that would be one way to address this. And I don't know at, at what point a parking study becomes the right way to go, because it seems like that might be overkill for something this size.
Right, I don't, I don't think our code actually, in this case, requires.
No, 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 it is a matter of requiring. It's just a matter of the applicant being able to justify his, his premise that, that there is apple parking. I don't know. You gonna say something?
Well, only, first of all, that it's not proposed to serve any alcohol, so it's a cafe with no super license.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
And again, I, I think a well-run cafe would prosper with or without the parking, and it's something we'll discuss later and hopefully recommend action on.
Right.
Now, when exactly that action may be considered and, and undecided is, is gonna be very close in terms of the end of this process as, as well. So I wish I could be more helpful at the time.
Right, no, no, I agree.
In, in other words, along with your application, we're discussing parking as a separate issue? Not, okay. Which will have an effect on your application.
Does it, does it, Liz, you have anything to ask or add?
Anything we should know about? Um, I, I just noticed on the building inspector's cover letter that there is no box checked for county planning board.
Right, I discussed this with Kurt last week, I guess it was.
Sorry, I don't need to dread.
No, that, that's okay.
No.
And the actual text that you wrote isn't checked either, so it seems like there was a couple of checks missing, but.
Well, actually, I mean, it was offered. Kathy prepared it and offered it from my review. I did sign it at the time. I guess I'm still getting somewhat acquainted with the situations in which we need to refer. It is, indeed is, it is well within five hundred feet of a, of a county or state road or facility, so under that. Although I think there's some, isn't there some fine print in, in what we refer and what we don't and whether this.
Well, yes, there's a matrix that is used, but one of the triggers is an increase in parking, or a change of use that increases the parking. And that's what this does, so, so they wanna see it.
Okay, thanks.
If this has been a retail change, we would have to, Kurt.
Right, if we're just retail, we'd just be a change of business ownership, right?
Yes, thanks.
We wouldn't see it.
So do we need a motion to?
We need a motion to say that the application is complete. Now, do we want to, I guess it's okay just to call it cafe, right? Cafe at.
Well, I mean, yes, actually, I didn't realize if, the only thing I could find in the application was New Paltz Cafe or New Paltz Eatery. So we don't have anything to call it right now.
It, it would be good to have something that.
Then let's, then let's call it New Paltz Eatery.
A rose by any other name.
Okay, so. May I have a motion to?
Shall move it. Second?
Okay, so the, the motion is to deem the application complete and to send it to the county for their approval under the general municipal law and to schedule a public hearing subject to receipt of a determination from the county in enough time to have our meeting. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, Mr. Gordon, we're done for tonight. And we will, let's see, the County Planning Board meets on February fifth, I believe. Here's the date. February, one, two, three, four, five, February fifth, Tuesday, February fif, no, it's Wednesday. So it would be February sixth. Sorry. February sixth. Is it. So we should hear from them by that Friday, the eighth. And our next meeting after that will be February nineteenth, Tuesday night. So I guess Katie will contact Mr. Gordon about the public hearing. You'll have, you'll have to send some notices to neighbors, and we'll have to publish something in their paper and so on. And that's it, right? Great. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Ron.
Have good luck. Okay.
Maurice, how flexible are you on your agenda, your?
In the sequence?
Yeah.
I am very flexible. What did you have in mind?
The gate.
Let's talk about the gate.
With this?
That's fine with me. I was gonna suggest that. Okay, so I would like to ask Mr. Zerler, who brought this matter to our attention, to make a presentation that will inform the rest of the board and those interested people present.
So the item in question is a gate. It goes across the road that I believe is, and you all should correct me if I'm wrong, is either located at the end of George Danskyn Way or on a small piece of road that is between George Danskyn Way and.
It's right on the town-village borderline. Between.
The gate, is that on the borderline?
Yeah, and I'm not sure.
Well, it, it, I'm not, yeah, I mean, this is, this is kind of important, in other words, where it is. I happen to believe that the town constructed it in the town, not on private property on, on, on Woodland Pond, so.
Well, regardless, the, the situation, the reason that I brought this up is not where the gate is, per se, precisely, but that the site plan that was approved for Woodland Pond, and I wasn't on the planning board at the time, but I was the liaison from the village board, so I was at all of these planning board meetings. There was a fair bit of discussion about whether that road, George Danskyn Way, which was to be built and connected to what was a fairly new road at the time in the subdivision Lent Farms, whether that road to Woodland Pond would be an emergency-only access road or a secondary access road. And it was ultimately deemed to be a secondary road, and there were various reasons given, two of which I think I mentioned in here. One was to provide residents an alternative way to get on and off of the Woodland Pond property without necessarily having to get onto a higher-speed road, which is North Putt Corners Road. And it's a county road. And the second thing was that there was a desire to build a bicycle access that would begin to provide more opportunities for bicycles traveling through village streets or village and town streets or residential roads. And so that bikeway is an integral part of George Danskyn Way. The reason that I brought this up is not because I have a position one way or the other about this, but that if there is going to be a change, it, I believe, requires that an application be filed, at least with the village, so that the planning board can consider whether or not to alter the site plan. Because if a gate goes up, then it's no longer a secondary access road. It becomes an emergency access road. And I understand from the town building inspector that, that I haven't seen this myself, but she says that the Lent Farm subdivision map also indicates that this road as shown on that map is a through road, a secondary access road. And if that is true, it may also require application in front of the town planning board in order to be, consider changing that. So for our purposes, it's just a question of letting the town know that if this change is considered to be permanent, that somebody needs to file an application. It will trigger secret, it'll trigger probably a public hearing, and then we would proceed, so.
Okay. Kurt, do you have anything to add at this point?
Yes, I mean, I, I tried to become acquainted with this, with this for, for several months. There were a lot of information. In fact, I'll be, as we spoke about, extracting all the relevant information. It's, it's not on the computer in the, in the village system. It's downstairs, underneath some stairs, needs to be brought upstairs and, and gone through. We do have the approved site plan, so I've had access to that. The the, by the way, it's, it's not, my understanding is it's not permanent at this time. It was.
But the gate is not.
It, it was put up because people were, it wasn't a dedicated street, and it wasn't constructed, and it wasn't dedicated or accepted by the town. So this, this gate is up. Now, I don't know what its status is in the future.
That Lent Drive is not a dedicated street?
No, that portion, in other words, that the cul-de-sac on the sub, on the approved subdivision map is shown as to be extended at such time that the town or, or village wished to. So with Woodland Pond, they, they do connect. And, but the road needs to be improved, in other words, that Lent Drive ended at a cul-de-sac, and there was a right-of-way left to connect it to the property line for an interconnection, indeed.
Yes.
And that, however, for whatever reason, there was a delay in constructing it. Woodland Pond was constructed, but that section of road wasn't finished.
Right.
And it wasn't, it was neither the town's nor the village's obligation to build that. I believe it was the developer of Woodland Pond, Woodland Pond. So with people using it as if it was a street, but it's not a dedicated street, it's not constructed to specification.
Okay.
So, um, there was, um.
And this is on Woodland Pond property, this?
No, this is, um, this is, uh, merely, um, it goes through, um, uh, homeowners' properties in Lent Farms. So in other words, it only goes as far as the extent of the property that comprised the Lent Farm subdivision plot.
Right.
And that happens to also be the town, village, municipal boundary.
Right.
Okay, um, now, Woodland Pond, of course, that's a private road, it's, proposed as a private road, it will, it's not being dedicated or accepted to the village or accepted by the village, so that's, um, um, it's, it's not a road, it's not a through road to North Putt, I just want to be clear about that.
Right. Okay.
Now.
I'm sorry, but that being the case, why would the connection to this Lent Farm road, or whatever road it's called there?
It's Lent, Lent Drive, Lent Drive.
Lent Drive. Why would that need to be any different specifications than the rest of the George Danskin Way?
It doesn't, no, it needs to be the town specs, of course, because it's in the town, so it needs to be dedicated and accepted by the town. And so it doesn't.
To be an easement, to?
No, it needs to be constructed physically to the specifications to be dedicated and accepted by the town.
It hasn't been paved yet.
It has been paved. It actually, it's been, I don't know if there's a final top coat, but, but everything was done. In the fall, it was converted from a gravel, it, it, the undersurf, the subsurface had been completed up to the gravel. It's now paved, I don't know if it's the final top coat, but it has been paved.
It has been striped and.
And it hasn't been striped.
More importantly, it's still technically a private road. I mean, the town does not have legal, they don't legally own it yet.
Okay.
Right, just like they don't have rights to Lent Drive.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
So, so, I mean, it's at that point that, you know, people are utilizing this as a town road, and the liability is actually on, you know, if some, you know, when it was gravel, especially, you know, it was dangerous.
Right.
Um, but, you know, just because of the speed people are driving through and things of that nature.
Also, there's a grade change, um, from the existing road, uh, onto the dirt portion. And, um, also, of course, the specifications for improving it include drainage, of course, and, and, um, and all of those features, and there, that specification is shown on the approved site plan.
And you, are you suggesting that that's not been done?
Um, I'm suggesting that it has not been offered for dedication to the town or accepted by the town.
No, I know that, but the, the specifics or the specifications of the way the road was built?
Well, I haven't been out there in a little while, but the last time I was there, it was dirt.
Yeah, but it's not anymore.
Yes, I think it's a little.
Is it, was it ever intended that that section of the road was going to be dedicated to the town for a town road?
Yes.
As part of Lent Drive, I believe.
Yes.
Was it?
Yeah, Lent Drive is.
I mean, I've done subdivisions where I've had to allow access into other properties.
And that's where.
And as a developer, it wasn't my responsibility to develop that access.
Not as the subdivider, it was, in this case, for whatever reasons, I wasn't around at the time, but in this case, it's shown as an improvement to be undertaken by Woodland Pond as part of the site plan development.
But approved for dedicate, for, to a dedicated status? I mean, there's a big difference between the specifications for a dedicated road and an access, emergency access road. I'll, I'll give you the one I built in the village, which was Bonneville View up behind the town hall. We have the exact same situation, it comes in to the back of the town, town hall. When we built that, that's an emergency access going in, and it's built to a much different standard than Bonneville View is.
And we could look.
Much different standard, because it's just meant for emergency access. Now, if you had a lot of people using it, that, that's a real problem for the neighbors.
Well, we have, we have the plan, so we can all avail ourselves to the details of what the specifications are for.
And as Michael said, it's not an emergency access, it's a secondary access road.
But no matter what, it's been now blocked off by a gate.
I think there is, but I, I don't know.
We couldn't find it, you know.
Oh, is that right?
Well.
I mean, the implication is that, that it is available to anybody, not just emergency vehicles.
That, that's the, right, I, that's, that was, that was the intent of all of the discussions at the planning board meetings, was, was to make a decision about whether or not this would be a road that would be open and connected to the rest of the village system by connecting from Woodland Pond by this new road at the time, George Danskin Way, making whatever this little connection is to Lent Farm, to Lent Drive, and then on to Henry Roy and so forth.
But Michael, was it meant to be a road, or was it meant to be a driveway?
No, it was meant to be a road.
So it was supposed to be a road all the way through Woodland Pond's?
No.
No.
So it was supposed.
Right up to Woodland Pond.
That's not intended to be public.
And then, and then from then on, it wasn't a road anywhere?
And it's private, George Danskin is private. Now you're using.
What is that?
Where, man.
Now you're using terms in a legal way that I'm not following.
But that's important, because that's what we have here. Is it a road, or is it a driveway coming out to Lent Farm Road?
Well, it's a pri, I, I can't.
If you're asking, it's never gonna be a dedicated road, it was not proposed, is that?
George Danskin Way is a pri, is a, is part of the, is part of the campus of Woodland Pond.
Private driveway. Right.
And they have several roads on their campus.
Right.
This is one of them.
It's one, it's a, but it's a private driveway that comes out onto, so the term road is really not right, correct here?
One does. But it's private.
One goes out to Lent. One goes out to Lent.
It's a private driveway coming out of Woodland Pond's.
Yes. Right, but, but the distinction made was it was never, it was, it was always, it was intended on the plan that it would be connected to the village or town road system.
Yeah, but as a driveway, not as a road.
Okay, I.
It's just, there's the differences in how they're built, the size of them, who owns them.
That could be.
And the intended. And the, and whatever.
A lot of differences.
Yes.
Okay, well.
But if it's a driveway that comes all the way up to Lent's, crossing easement, that Woodland Pond's was supposed to build, a driveway is much different to me than, than a road that's gonna be dedicated to one of the municipalities.
The last, the last little, I mean.
Well, the section we're talking about is, is different than Danskin Way. In other words, what we're talking about is the end of a temporary cul-de-sac in the Lent Farm subdivision in the town of New Palt's, as it, and again, it would be much easier for them with the plan.
Yeah, but Danskin Way has a right-of-way across this, but I've been led to understand.
Well, I think what happened, and I, Kurt might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm not entirely sure if it's relevant, but the, the sewer and water system comes down that way. And so the decision was to, when they built Woodland Pond, was to put that system in and bring it through into the Lent Farm system, and they got the necessary, you know, agreements and so forth. And then they finished George Danskin Way, but there, there was a small section between Lent Drive and the end of George Danskin Way in the village, where there was, um, where the sewer system went through and the easement exists, but that section of road is no longer in the village. And Kurt's saying that, or that, that section of connection, whatever you want to call it, driveway. Kurt seems to be saying that Woodland Pond had agreed to complete that, but I'm not sure that they ever did, in part, I think, because of, uh, some site plan issues related to your property. And so there was various decisions made, and I think by that point, the people who were building Woodland Pond were long gone.
Well, they did, they did come back.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yeah, and, you know, I dealt with Woodland Pond directly.
Okay.
Um, over like four years, and we came up with a, we basically moved the road twenty feet away from my property, um, so that, you know, it could connect up, um, but.
Did they actually, but they?
They, they did construct it, they paid for it.
Oh, they paid for the construction?
They paid for the construction.
Okay.
I paid for the engineering, they paid for the construction.
Okay.
So, um, and the, the bigger, I know, uh, the bigger issue here is, there's a question, there's two other large plots in the village, one owned by Peter Reed Zockenell, one by Steve Ehrman, and there's concern with everyone in our neighborhood that if this road is a full, open road, these two larger, commercial, higher-density village-zoned developments could start to use our, our neighborhood as their primary access point. I mean, they're not gonna go through Woodland Pond, they're gonna come through our development. And, you know, you know, we, we're, we're the town with, you know, it's more residential, it's a larger area, and what we really, we really like the interconnectivity of pedestrian and cyclists. All, most of the people that come through there from Woodland Pond also agree that, um, they would prefer to have the gate up, the, you know, because it protects, I mean, when, when it wasn't there, a certain amount of time, the taxis, the delivery, the employees were driving so fast in the road, um, there was a lot of incidents that were, you know, where people had to get out of the way, especially at night and different things. So for the safety of everyone, the Woodland Pond residents, for the residents of our neighborhood, we've been really, um, trying to make it so that that could be emergency access. And so, you know, whatever developments we need to do, I mean, because really, what's the purpose of that besides, I mean, what, driving traffic is so important that it needs to go through there versus through North Putt? I mean, I understand bicycle and pedestrian is really important, um, and, you know, everyone in the neighborhood approves that. But, you know, if emergency access can get through there, um, you know, do the residents, you know, really need to, if that's open, it's not just residential traffic that's gonna go through, it's also gonna be, you know, the deliveries, the taxis, the employees, those are the type of traffic that we're trying to avoid, and also avoiding future higher development, you know, um, higher-density development traffic, you know, being funneled through our neighborhood.
And Woodland Pond, really, off, off the record, they would, um, indicate to you that they would prefer having one main entrance and exit from their property, it just makes it more secure, it makes it easier for them, for them to police and to, uh, to keep an eye on things. That back entrance is something that's somewhat of a pain in the neck for them.
I don't think we would be opposed to correcting a mistake, but I'm very much opposed to somebody just taking it on their own to decide what is a good and what is not a good site plan, and changing it.
Right.
I find that to be quite a slap in the face to tell you.
No, no, the people I talked to, um, and, and I'm only here seven years, um, Allison was the secretary there, she now works at Woodland Pond, and Kathy, uh, your building inspector, said, all along the process, it was supposed to be emergency access, access only, at the last minute, some, there was, there was some kind of end run, and it became secondary road.
It was like a.
And not exactly.
Well, it doesn't really matter, actually, I mean, what matters is that the site plan specifies secondary access.
But if secondary access, does that mean, uh, traffic coming and going?
Yes, it, it means that the road is.
But we don't know.
Open. I'm, I'm, I'm using my memory to the best that I can to tell you what the planning board discussions were with the applicant at the time that Woodland Pond was to be considered for approval. You've raised a lot of issues, and, and I could answer them, but I'd rather not. All I really wanted to do was inform the planning board of the situation, because there is a legal situation here which Rich is referring to, which is that regardless of all these other details, it isn't okay to make a change on the ground to something that alters a site plan without first getting, um, an application in front of the appropriate board to consider whether or not that site plan change can take place. That's, that, that, at this point, that's the issue, and all of your points are relevant, but they would come up during that application review. And it would give the opportunity for Woodland Pond residents to come and speak on their own about how they feel about whether there should be a gate or no gate.
May, may I just comment also, though, that the town, I think, in their, um, defense, just, you know, because they were the one that ultimately, they were the one that installed the gate.
Yes.
Um, and we obviously went to them asking, um, because it was town property. They had done it, and they, they approved this measure as a temporary measure until the road has been dedicated. So, because right now, technically, th- this is a private road. You can't, you can't force, um, a developer to, to give access to another private developer across, you know what I'm saying? It's not like it's the town.
However, however, however you can, and, and the site plans for both your subdivision and Woodland Pond indicate that that approval was given.
But I guess what I'm saying is the road hasn't been completed yet.
But it isn't clear to me that the town has the right, the town attorney agrees, because he approved this, and the town board went ahead and did it, and they authorized their town highway department to install the gate.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, as an individual, I disagree with that decision. I don't think they have the right to do that, because you have site plans that indicate otherwise, and those were approved, and those plans, I believe, wouldn't have, indicate that this was a connectable road system, unless approvals were agreed to by the developer of each of these two parcels, so.
But, but if the parcel's still under construction, if it hasn't been completed yet?
But it.
It's still a private.
It, it's not.
But, but we allowed Woodland Pond's to open without it being completed.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that we have a site plan that's not, that, that's, that's not viable. We've got a viable site plan sitting there.
Right.
The fact that it was never completed, uh, wasn't that nice of the village to allow Woodland Pond's to open without it being completed? It was a nice thing we did. People are living there, it's been working pretty good.
They lose a half a million in a month.
I know.
But I, I just.
But I'm, I'm saying is that.
Yeah.
If we, if that had all, if, if all i's been dotted, t's have been crossed, da-da-da-da-da, we wouldn't be here tonight. But the other thing is, I can't imagine the village going in and doing, taking this kind of an action against the town development.
What action?
Well, now you get to.
Taking your village property and blocking a town.
Oh, oh, I was gonna say.
That's right, that municipal boundary is quite relevant here, and, and probably more of the issue than we're discussing it as. In other words, Woodland Pond is not in violation of their, of their site plan, that, that this is done outside of our jurisdiction.
Right.
It's intermunicipal, and I'm not sure, I see, I see the letter has been drafted, but I'm not sure that it.
Woodland, Woodland Pond has a right-of-way to Dan, to, whatever the name of that street is, Lent. The town came in and put a gate across that right-of-way?
Well, no, they have the right-of-way.
I'd be calling my lawyers.
They, they have a right-of-way to, to the, just to the town-village line. They don't have a right-of-way past the town-village line.
That's not true.
They don't have a right-of-way.
They don't have a right-of-way to Lent?
They don't have, they have a right-of-way right up to the line. Jo, Lent comes in, George Danskin, they meet.
Oh, they meet?
Yeah, there's a, they meet, and there's a line, and one, one side is a village, one side is the town.
Right.
So they have an easement or, you know, right-of-way all the way up to the town. They don't have anything into the town.
So the little spur, you're saying the little spur that goes off of the?
Yes, that is in the town.
That spur is Lent, is also part of Lent Drive?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, and that's in the town, so, so the, so Woodland Pond only has access up to the town line.
Not to the road.
Not to the road.
That's right, see, I found this confusing when I was trying to get a grip on the facts, and when, when we're talking about it, because I'm not looking at a map, it's, it's.
There's a map.
It's much more difficult.
Any, any mistake could have happened in the past, and boy, do we live with some of those. But I can't imagine that, you know, that that mistake was made.
Because I was on the planning board when this was approved. I'm the last surviving city, not state, city member of the planning board from when this was approved. And I remember the discussions, you were present at those discussions, and it was clear to me at the time that we made concessions regarding the driveways and access to, from this road to Lent, to assure that there would be secondary access from Woodland Pond to town roads.
Uh, I, I know that.
Town roads, not a town something, not a, not a private something, but access from Woodland Pond to town roads.
Yeah, and I think eventually will be, once it's dedicated, and then.
Well, no, it, if it's been paved.
It's not a town road yet.
No, it hasn't.
I'm not saying it's a town road, but it's a paved entity which is being used as a road, otherwise they wouldn't put a, a gate on.
Well, before it was paved, it was being.
We don't have plowing, we don't have, um, we, we don't have to any town services.
Yeah, it's all, you know, so like, if, if someone were to drive on there and have an accident because it wasn't plowed, because it's not plowed to town, you know, I mean, you know what I'm saying, it's not a town.
Right, but you all drive one, and it's your developers' responsibility. Again, I, I'd like to just take a step back.
No, it's not their developers' responsibility.
To take care of their road?
The subdivider, the subdivider has done his.
He, he does still.
Oh, I'm sorry, to take care of, I thought you meant the staff.
Okay, can I, can I get back to the point at hand here, because we're going off.
What's the point?
The point is that I'm simply alerting this planning board to a situation where I believe a site plan has been violated, and it's a site plan that was approved by the village planning board, and the, the violation, if it exists, was enacted by the municipal, the municipality, the town of New Palt's. And I'm just suggesting that we bring it to their attention, that we believe that this is a violation and that, um, some action, you know, probably sitting down and talking about it first and getting all of this information out so that everybody can look at it, is something we should consider doing. That's all, I'm not trying to solve a problem here, um, I'm just trying to avoid.
What method do you see to bring it to their attention? We, we've already spoken to their, uh, building department.
Yes, I spoke to the building inspector, and, um, it, it's my feeling that, um, my impression from her was that this was a decision made by the village board, um, I'm sorry, it was a decision made by the town board, um, on, um, based on the opinion or recommendation of the town board's attorney, and then.
And then your clausor was involved with it too.
Okay, so I would just, so I guess. Okay, so I would just, so I guess what I would suggest is that we, um, probably start by asking, if possible, to have our attorney contact their attorney and get sort of the legal basis for why he recommended this and, um, if there's a timetable, because several people have suggested that this is a temporary thing. What's the timetable or what's the trigger for taking the gate down? Or if, if as it sounds, certain residents would like it to be permanent, then that they understand that at some point it's gonna need to come back to the village planning.
Okay. Michael, you've seen the correspondence between me and George, our attorney?
Yes, I have.
Um, in which I raised the issue whether this is, this amounts to enforcement.
Right.
And I believe it does.
Okay.
And I think George does. And if it does, then that means that it's not our job. It becomes the village board's job and maybe the building department or.
Okay.
But, um, and the, the only action that I saw available to us would be, or I, I, I suggested this,
Right.
would be to, uh, have the planning board authorize me to write a letter to the village board saying that we would like, we believe this is a violation of our approved site plan. And we would like you to decide whether you think it is and if it is, then, you know, do something with the town board or the town. I, I forgot the wording of it, but perhaps that needs to be worked, but something like that to, to pass it on to the, we raised the issue to the village board.
Yeah, that's, so the sample letter that the attorney wrote,
Yes.
that's fine with me. I think that.
Okay. Has anybody else read the letter that, that George sent as a draft?
Yes.
Did they have a comment about it?
No.
I might have been a little stronger, but I agree with you 100%. We're not the enforcers.
Right.
Uh, the only change I would make is to who sees on this, I would, um, instead of town, I mean, I understand he, our attorney didn't know this, so I would send it to the superintendent of the highway department, Chris Marks. I would also add the building inspector for the town, Stacy Delaritas.
Okay.
He sees on it.
Kurt, what do you think?
Uh, as far as the letter goes?
Yeah.
Well, actually, I think, um, again, I, my office only has jurisdiction within the village and even.
So does mine.
What's that?
So does mine. I'm, I'm in my office, there's similarly constrained.
Okay, so, um, again, I'm not sure who, I'm not sure who will be cited by the village, the town?
Uh, it isn't a matter of citing, it's a matter of getting a dialogue happening on a level higher than.
Okay, I thought you referenced enforcement before.
Well, what I'm saying is that if, if a site plan or similar that we approved is, I'll call it violated, then it becomes an enforcement issue. Or, I mean, to do something about it amounts to enforcement. Planning board does not do enforcement. We can raise the fact that we have a site plan that has been violated, and I'm sorry if that's a bad word, but, um, that, whose terms have been.
Modified.
Fill in the blank. Um, anyhow, that, and that the village should determine with its attorney how to proceed.
I'll avail myself to the, um, to the advice of council, sure, yeah.
Yeah, it's not the town that's in violation, it's Woodland Pond. Woodland Pond is the one who has the approved site plan that requires them to have an access to the Lent Drive or whatever it's called. At this point, they've allowed that to be blocked or somebody has blocked it.
It's not on the property.
I, I don't care.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. They had an agreement that said that they were to be able to bring their access to Lent Drive.
Right.
Now, either they misled the board and didn't have that agreement, or they unilaterally changed it after the fact and negated it.
I don't think Woodland Pond changed it unilaterally.
The point is it doesn't matter.
Right, it doesn't matter.
That's.
So anyhow, this, here's, here's the thing.
I disagree with that.
Okay, go ahead.
It doesn't matter. I, I don't think I agree that it doesn't matter. I think, I think.
But for purposes of our discussion, it doesn't matter.
For purposes of our discussion, it doesn't matter. For purposes of action, of enforcement action, it, it.
Right, but that's not our job, so, so we can't, I mean, I don't care. Really, I mean, I, I want this to be resolved in an equitable, legal way, but I, what, what, what happens after we pass it on?
They don't have a particular opinion on the letter. I mean, that's, that's fine if you, if, if, if it's drafted, you might have signed it. I don't have a particular opinion.
I, I got that, yes, I understand that. Um, okay, so.
Ju- just one last question.
Sir.
I don't want to chew up too much of your time. Do you, um, do you foresee the possibility of getting that site plan changed? Secondary to emergency?
We won't change anything just like that. I mean, we, we.
No, I mean, is there a process, is that even a relevant possibility?
But I mean, is that something, I don't think Woodland Pond would ever come before the board, the planning board again. Is it even possible for us as not the applicant to request something like that, being an interested party? Or being someone who's affected by the plan and, and the other, you know, injustices, most neighbors, I was the only one who lived there. All the other neighbors, you know, I mean, like all this was happening, you know, they, they didn't get to voice their opinion at, at, or they didn't, you know.
That's the way it works.
I know how it works, but I'm just saying, you know, for all of us to be able, you know, who are concerned citizens, you know, to, you know, how are we gonna go bring this to you?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I know that there are valid issues that you've raised, uh, concerning other future developers using your streets as their thoroughfares and so on. I, I don't know how to deal with that. All I can say is that our site plan, the terms of our site plan have not been lived up to. Whether it's Woodland Pond's problem or the town's problem, I don't know, it's not my job to figure that out. All I can do is give the information to the village board and have them and their attorney figure out what they wanna do about it.
But if that was something, is that something you could change as a, as a, as an entity?
No.
Not on our own.
I mean, you see how difficult it is for us in particular because we're, we're, we're butting it up against this village-town issue.
Yes.
It's right there. I mean, we go to get approval from one entity and invalidates the other, vice versa, you know. I can't, we can't control Woodland Pond, you know, all of these complexities. I mean, I've been fighting this now for five years, you know, putting lots of money into it, the whole neighborhood, everyone. I know that it isn't necessarily your job, but it is your site plan that was approved. I don't know how to go about.
The site plan.
Working with you.
I think it's important to understand this is not a town issue or a village issue, really. The two parties that are involved here are Woodland Ponds and a developer who granted the easement across the property that got them to Lent Drive. The town should not have gotten involved with this.
Right.
I, I don't understand what authority they had to come in here and block this dev- development.
They had a bulldozer.
I mean, for, there are, there are lots of possible.
They just decided to put up a gate across.
It doesn't matter. I mean, it doesn't matter at this point, so.
So let me just, if I might, I mean, so there are numerous possible solutions to your problems. A gate is one of them. There are probably others and there may not be just one perfect one. But if, as Rich is pointing out, if, if your neighborhood association and the authorities at Woodland Pond sit down together and mutually agree that you would no longer like this to be a through road or a driveway that connects to a road yet to be dedicated, or whatever you wanna call it, then you have mutual agreement and then it's a simply a matter of the parties going to the various appropriate boards and filing an application in the village at least, maybe in the town as well, depending on your subdivision plan, and requesting that this be changed with legal documentation that shows both parties have agreed to this. And then it's probably not gonna be very complicated for the boards to go along with what you're requesting.
Of course it's complicated. I mean, they, well, but, but that's beside the point. That's, that's why we're here to.
Okay, so, but my point is, that's, that's one way of doing it. We can't, if, if you have, you have your party and you have Woodland Pond and, and you are the, the two parties in this who have to work together to decide how you wanna resolve this problem. At that point, you can then come to the town and the village and say, this is what we've agreed to and, you know, how can you make this happen? So, and, and it, and, and that's all you need to do. I mean, that is what I believe you need to do. Those are the steps.
Okay, so, Michael and everybody else, every other board member and Kurt, is there anything, any changes that you would like made aside from the additional CCs on the letter? Kurt, do you think there's anything that we have to look at before, or anything that we have to verify the terms of, of the letter?
I think the facts of this are very significant and I don't think we've gotten to the bottom of them. However, um, I really have nothing further at this point, I think.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is before we send a letter to the village board stating these as facts, is there some way that we can verify them so that we know that what we are saying is accurate? Because I, I would rather not pose this as facts to the village board if it's not really fact.
Well, that's why I was a little bit surprised to see George's letter. I mean, I, I remember the emails.
It says draft. It's, it was a draft. I, I asked, he, he said that it would take him between one and some unknown number of hours
I remember from emails.
to do the research. We don't have the budget for that. There's no application, there's no escrow.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a way to do this without it impacting.
Well, that, that's a, that, that's a relatively neat trick and I can't, you know, as far as an alternative to research by the author of that letter, I can offer a good one to that. In other words, that letter should be, he deserves to research it and be, before he prepares it for you.
Well, yes, he does deserve.
I'd be helpful to him. I'd invite him in to, I'd carry the file, the boxes upstairs. I'd look at it with him. I'd like an answer as much as anyone.
Right.
I don't think we need to research it. We've got a gate blocking the easement. We've got an approved site plan that shows there's supposed to be an easement from Woodland Ponds to Lent Drive, now being blocked by a gate.
Alright, so what, what I would like is.
Mr. Gorbachev, tear down this wall.
What I would like is a vote of the board that thinks that we have enough information for me to send this letter.
Yeah, I just, the only thing I have to say about your letter is, it says, asks the village board whether or not they agrees with the site plan. And that's not their job to do that, that's our job.
Okay.
I just want them to take an action that clarifies our site plan has been violated.
Okay. Michael, do you have a comment about that?
No, I think that's a good point. I, I, the, most of this third paragraph, I feel like, isn't the right thing to ask the village board. That is, basically, would like to ask the village board to determine what I believe are correct facts, that is, simply pull the file and have the village board's attorney look at it with the planner and determine that this is in fact, um, a secondary act, that, that there is supposed to be a connection between George Danson Way and Lent Drive, whatever you wanna call these things, roads or driveways. And then indeed there is that, then, um.
Okay, so what we're saying is that we believe that the approved site plan provides for the secondary access road
Yes.
that has now been blocked.
Yes.
And, and we would like you to.
Correct this.
Like them to, like them to correct it, yes. Um, and whatever that, whatever the terms of that are, contact the town.
Would you like to make a motion and modify that first?
At this point in time, the gate stands in violation of approved site plan, we request that the village board, um, request that the village board review the approved Woodland Pond site plan. And so I would modify it to say, third paragraph, second sentence, we requested the village board review the approved Woodland Pond site plan and determine which course of action, um, to follow. And then I would delete the rest of that paragraph and that's all I'm doing.
Uh, Michael, would you say to follow, uh, if I might suggest to assure that the integrity of the site plan is maintained?
The terms of.
To follow, to determine, say that again?
That the integrity of the site plan is maintained.
Sure, it's okay with me.
Is there a need to do this at this meeting? My thought is,
Right, I was.
Draft this, this letter, get it out for all of us to think about it and act on it the next meeting.
That's fine with me. I was looking to make this expedient, but.
But there's nothing coming down our.
No, there, there isn't. There's just a gate up now that's blocking something. And I was just reacting to Michael's request.
Yeah, no, I, I was thinking the same thing that it, it's fine with me if we wait.
Okay, so.
Draft it, wait two weeks.
We are done.
The village board did just hear it, by the way, though he's sitting back there working on his computer.
He's making believe he didn't. He's got the hat over his ears and, uh, okay, so, um.
There's no motion on the table then?
No, there is not.
Okay, then we don't need to do, we don't need to act on it?
We don't need to do anything, no.
So.
Except that Michael has agreed to redraft this letter.
So I'll revise the letter and I'll send it to all the members of the.
And to George.
Planning board and to George and to Kurt and, um, Kelly and.
By the way, I don't think we need to look at everything. I think all we need to look at is the final approved site plan.
Right.
So we don't need to research the whole history of the development of Woodland Pond.
And I'll, and I'll make sure that we have that on our next meeting.
I'm sure I have that in my closet.
That's upstairs in, in our office. That is the one set of documents. That and amended, amended site plan approval in 2009.
Alright, so for the next meeting, we'll have that.
And the amendment was for Andy's.
The change to this, um, to this matter, although I think.
I don't think it does.
I think it was after, my thing was after.
Okay, so that.
I mean, I was, the last three years or four years, I've been negotiating on all of this, um, and, and a resolution just recently. That's the reason why they are able to completely throw it.
Right.
It's because we came to a resolution when the site plan was approved. This was years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, so my thing's just happened, uh, in 2012.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the reason why they are able to construct the road.
Right. Okay.
Alright, thank you all.
We're done, thank you.
Thanks, guys, for coming. Did you want this back?
Do you have any interest in?
I'm happy to look at it. These, this is a, these are proposals for permanent changes, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Before the bike.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, getting back to the agenda then. Let's talk about the, uh, amending zoning law to authorize the planning board discretion in determining off-street parking. You, you've all received Kurt's changes to the, uh, suggested changes to the code and you saw in the meeting memo, the paragraph that George recommended we have as a preamble
Yep.
to it and Kurt agrees with that?
I concur.
Okay. So, is there any discussion on this?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Would Schedule C remain in existence and be somewhere for the planning board to refer to?
Well, this is our bible.
So this would remain instead of a mandate, a guideline?
That's right.
That's correct.
That's what it says.
But.
Sir, one question?
Yes, sir.
So are these changes, and these are great, um, the other parts of the off-street parking code that refer to, um, up to 400 feet and so forth, is, does that remain in the code or does it matter if there, if it's, does, does any wording have to be changed with respect to those?
Let me see if I've got this right. The only thing that's really changing here is whether this is discretionary or required.
That's correct.
Everything else remains the same.
But I just wanna make sure it's not inconsistent.
Well, Michael's got a good point that there might be, the way the code is worded, and I must admit, I haven't looked at every, at every place in the code where it could be. But I, I don't think it would be contradictory. I think, um, and again, we probably do wanna revisit much of our code even after this on parking, and the recommendations to the village board. Well, that's.
Yes, no, of cour- yeah, yes.
So, I mean, I.
We've been saying this for, uh.
I think it, it works this way, but, but Michael's right, in other parts of the code, we, you may see, um, there may be language that, um, that uses the word require again or something, you know.
Well, I, so for example, this is the part that, this is the only part I wanna personally wanna focus on because it's been contentious for years under 212 dash 44. under two twelve dash forty-four, calculation of required spaces, the minimum required off-street parking schedule. The number of off-street parking spaces required for any use shall be determined by reference to Schedule C called the minimum required off-street schedule. So we at least ought to change that paragraph so it accurately reflects what we're calling Schedule C.
The correct name, right. Off-street parking guidelines.
Right, so if, so we ought to try from that first paragraph in two twelve forty-four A to indicate that it's no longer a requirement, but refer to the guidelines for off-street.
Right.
Yeah.
Then, I'd still like to delete the whole paragraph B, but maybe that's not essential right now, which is determining the number of spaces. Because if it's not required, if we have discretion, then that's.
Well, but it's a guideline. Isn't it? Isn't, isn't, isn't that just another guideline?
Um, credit for existing spaces, spaces in municipal parking lots where available may be credited toward off-street parking, provided such spaces are within four hundred feet, uh, et cetera, et cetera.
You know, Kurt's.
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, it doesn't say you have to, right, okay.
I think it's not, it, it's not, um, fatally contradictory, but it, it, it may not work together.
It's a, it's a, right. It, it should be a, or, or at least referenced. Well, Michael, what would you suggest then?
Well, if we're.
Or Kurt, but.
I, I would stand by what I've said multiple times, which is I would ask that we delete the entire paragraph two twelve forty-four B, parts one, two, and three. Just delete the whole thing.
So does that take out the four hundred foot?
It does. It takes out the.
Completely from the whole code? Or is it somewhere else?
Uh, I don't think it's anywhere else.
Could you please tell me again the section of code that is?
Two twelve dash forty-four B.
Okay, got it. Credit for existing spaces. So, Michael, your suggestion was to get rid of B entirely?
That is my suggestion. And then modify the opening paragraph in two twelve forty-four A, as I just said, to make it consistent with the new change to Schedule C.
So change the minimum required off-street schedule to be called off-street parking guidelines.
Off-street parking guidelines, and then it would read the number of off-street parking spaces. To be considered by the planning board for any use shall be determined by reference to Schedule C, comma, the.
Off-street parking guidelines.
Off-street parking guidelines. Thank you.
Uh, Secretary, did you get that?
Did you get that, Colonel?
It's in two twelve forty-four A.
You're concerned.
And you're suggesting that we remove two twelve forty-four B?
I am.
Entirely. Kurt, do you have a comment about that?
I agree with those, uh, that change. And, and I see that by the same token, some of our language that exists in the code, again, for those uses that are not specifically addressed in Schedule C, I see that it does allow the planning board to use it as a guide for other uses that aren't mentioned. So, those things kind of work. It's the, the other side of the same coin. But I agree with, um, eliminating two twelve forty-four B.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if you wanna address the audience, but it's hard to see with all the people out there, but somebody in particular is in concern.
Can we bring up the house lights?
Sure.
Okay, I, I have, um, I have one question before we do that. And that is. 'Cause that can wait. So bring up the house lights. Are there questions from the?
Yes, by removing all the paragraph Bs and changing it to recommended rather than has to be, are there, does that put the planning board at risk of making decisions that are outside where the guidelines are and not having some kind of justification?
Well, yes, and that's our responsibility to, in our resolution for approval or disapproval of any application, to justify that, yes. What, what was the rationale for approving or disapproving of a particular application? That's, that's what we're taking on here, as opposed to just hiding behind the guideline that says, no, Mr. Gordon, you can't have your restaurant, cafe, eatery because you, 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 you know, there, there aren't those seven spaces available. So, so that's it, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a burden, but. We have broad shoulders. We're tough. Okay, the house lights can be dimmed. Okay, so, any other changes or comments, Ms. Hershaw? Mr. Rocco?
Nope.
Okay, so, um, we can then say, now, this is going to be just something that we're sending to you as a, that we agree with the changes you've made with these additions, which is the paragraph that George recommended as a preamble or whatever you call it. And then the removal of two twelve forty-four B and the modification, sorry?
Right.
So just asking you to take that on to the.
Yes, now, it could be done either way, but I'm, I'm very pleased to do it that, that way. It could be directly from the village, from the planning board to the village board, but I'd be happy to simply, we've been working on it, and it would be.
That's fine for me.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine. Take it. You got it.
Is that a motion?
That's a blessing.
That's a, that's a pass the buck. Pass over the buck. Okay, so can we say that we are done with this? Kurt, will you please send us the revision to your thing? So we will have that for our record?
Great, thank you for doing all that, sir.
Yeah, it's nothing.
Thank you for, for your help, everyone.
Well, thank you for.
Didn't you say we had a budget item to discuss?
Well, there's, there is that. Let me just see what else we have.
Have this, too.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't pick out.
Kurt has a presentation. Well, you, you can, you can look at it. There is one here, there. Yeah, pretty pictures, really nice pictures. Okay. Mr. Director, you have pretty pictures to show us and.
Uh, yeah, so this, this guide that you have, um, is, um, was recently published by the, um, Chuan Gun.
Shangum.
Shang, thank you. Shang, Shangum, uh, the regional council on this, and it was presented to the village board, um, last Wednesday by its executive director.
Al Weger.
Yes, who is, um.
Village operist.
And also traveling about, also, also traveling about from one municipality to the next within this Chuan Gun region. And, and asking that, um, that planning boards utilize this as a guide. And, um, the presentation again was made to the village board, and we agreed that, um, that it would be discussed here. And then that if appropriate, if recommended, and, and the village board agrees as well, that, that it could, a provision to the code could be added that this document could be recognized as important in those situations that involve, um, the region, perhaps even used from the ridge to, um, to new development in the village of New Falls.
Like Woodland Pond?
Yes, is a great example, actually, yeah.
Fabulous example.
Yes.
Well, well, before we moved here, I looked up at the, from the ridge and said, what the hell is that ugly thing?
Well, it's, uh, anyway, so it would be, yes, and the, the guides, this guide includes techniques for addressing that. Everything from the actual techniques of assessing, um, height and how imposing would be in terms of use shed to the process. Um, of course, it fits neatly into the environmental quality review process and into our, um, our authorization under site plan review in particular, and subdivision to the extent that that takes place in the village. So, um, again, it would be a guide that the board would not be, um, it would not be codified as such. It would be codified by reference as a guide to the planning board wherever the, the board feels it would be a helpful tool to utilize.
Correct.
And I do recommend that it be incorporated in, in that fashion.
Actually, this is gonna become significant with the NIFIN property.
Yes.
It's gonna be very significant with it.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Could we have a chance to read it and then our next meeting make a decision?
I think we should. I think we should. It's a very rich, uh, document. It's been evolving over the years. We've seen, this is the third iteration that I've seen of something like this, and.
The, uh, the corridor, corridor management plan was, um, was the other document that I have, and then this, I believe this is a quite recent publication. I don't know.
It could be.
So.
Okay, so, so we will have as our assignment to read it for the next meeting
Right.
and discuss whether we want to incorporate it as, as an incorporated by reference document to be considered where applicable. Cha, cha, cha. Okay, Kurt, thank you very much. Uh, we have minutes to approve. Let's get that out of the way now. These are the December eighteenth of it. Madam Secretary knows. Here we are. Does anybody have any comments or corrections for the draft December eighteenth, two thousand and twelve, planning board minutes? Mr. Rocco?
Nope.
So moved, accepted?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, so, I believe the only thing left that we have is a budget packet that I received last week, which, um, I think requires, Mr. Mayor, when, when does this, uh, due back to you?
January thirty-first or?
January thirty-first, draft budget.
January thirty-first.
When is your next meeting?
Our next meeting would be the, uh.
February something.
Yeah.
First, uh.
Fifth, fourth, fifth?
Okay.
It is the fifth.
So what I'd like to do is get copies made of this and distributed to everybody so we can all look at it and talk about it at the next meeting.
Now, is this, is this the kind of thing that we could talk about online with emails to each other?
Yes, but.
I mean, it's not an application in front of the board.
No, that's true, but, um, it can be done in email, yes, and, and it might very well become public record. That's no problem. Yeah, we could discuss it.
I mean, I can, I can understand not discussing somebody's application via emails back and forth, but this kind of an issue.
Well, this is, this is public.
Maybe expediting.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't mind. Uh, I, I don't wanna keep it out of public view.
That's not the reason for it.
No, no, I understand. It would be expeditious, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you clarify this a bit with Bob Freeman, the man of local government and all? The guy in all my deals with local news. Just to keep in mind that emails are not considered a meeting in any way, shape, or form. So if we have a, the planning board emailing each other is not a meeting. It's considered more a rapid exchange of in-office emails, like we accept at all public documents, and are subject to foil. So if there's things you need to bounce ideas back and forth, and, uh, do we need this piece of equipment or that consultant or whatnot, that's fine. It has to happen on you, uh, because if a decision on sales isn't in your hands, it's not gonna be decided at night. So, if that's, if that's the concern, then it's not one you should worry about.
That's not my concern. I don't have a concern, yeah. Okay, so, I, I will get copies of this sent electronically to each of you, and we can talk about it in email, talk about it at the next meeting. And I think we've exhausted the, uh, agenda, unless I'm missing something.
Nope.
Rats. Then may I please have, yes?
I move that with adjourned.
That's a very appropriate movement.
Second.
And we have votes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? I will consider this losing to our vote. Now that the meeting's closed, I, I wanna, here's, here's what I.